I mean, if he was in the majors, he'd be getting paid millions. Four for six, man. That's pretty good numbers.
You got somebody leaving?
Oh, yeah, I guess that's.
Oh, one of your road death?
It's ten for twelve.
A shortcut? Shouldn't say it. It makes me so tall.
Twelve for twelve. You're more of a twelve for twelve type of guy?
I guess you expect that this is what the commitment is.
I agree.
It's twice a month and work your schedule around to put your hand down.
Well, and we've had an extra, and we had an extra week in there since the last one.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know.
Maybe it's a two week trip.
It's true. Ten day. I mean, I'm on both sides of it at the same time. Yeah, it's, you know, you gotta do this ride once, may as well have a little bit of fun. I mean, now that this isn't just a gas.
How much more fun could you want? Quiet.
What are we doing for everybody?
Suspense. I haven't had time to look at this. This is a pretty good one.
I don't know. It was suggested to me, but.
Straightforward, just simple.
Just simpler, I guess. It's a. It was suggested to me. It sounds. So, I'll let you and Adam work it over and see what you think. I want to proceed that way.
Call the meeting to order at Smotcombe County Board of Commissioners, regular meeting for Monday, June 12th. We'll begin with the pledge and I'll invite you to remain standing for the blessing.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice Chairman Peterson.
Today, we have Pastor Sampson Costin from Pine Grove Church to lead us in prayer, please.
Heavenly Father, thank you for today. I thank you for each one that's here. For this Board of Commissioners, I thank you who work for their service. Thank you for this great nation that we live in, for the freedom that we have. Pray, Lord, that you would continue to bless this nation, great state of Michigan and this county. Pray for the meeting here this afternoon, Lord, that you would guide and bless each decision that's made. I again thank you for who you are, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Baker.
Present.
Johnston.
Here.
Peterson.
Yes, ma'am.
Painter.
Yes, ma'am.
Maher. Carr.
Yes.
And Combs.
Couple absent, but we still have a quorum. On tonight's agenda, I don't have anything to change. Does anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Johnston.
I've moved to approve the agenda as presented.
Support been moved and supported to approve the agenda as presented. Discussion. If not hearing, or excuse me, if not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Two sets of minutes. If you remember at the last meeting, we had a change to make and we were gonna roll it forward and approve at the next. And so we've got those two sets.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Johnston.
I've moved to approve the Monday, May 8th minutes as amended.
Support.
Been moved and supported to approve the regular meeting from Monday, May 8th as amended. Discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Johnston.
I would also move to approve the May 22nd meetings as presented.
Support.
Been moved and supported to approve the meeting minutes for Monday, May 22nd as presented. Discussion. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Public comments. Hearing no public comments. Vice Chairman Peterson with tonight's correspondence, please.
All right, let's try and get through these before 4:10. First up is FOIA Freedom of Information Act Appeal. This is found on page, oh gosh. It would be thirty-nine for you. We have a individual that is asking for some information about a case. If you notice, it has been rejected from our sheriff's office. The note being that this person is incarcerated and under Public Act 442 of nineteen seventy-six. It is stated, the public policy for this state, that all persons except those persons incarcerated in state or local correctional facilities are entitled to full and complete information regarding the affairs of government, such and such. So, this person had the right to appeal. He is appealing to us and would like to know what we think about it. I guess I've never done one of these before, so I would think that a motion to uphold the rejection or grant the appeal would be sufficient. Does anybody have any questions about this?
I have one. Why are we rejecting it?
What's that?
Why are we rejecting giving them these files?
Like I said, Public Act 442 of nineteen seventy-six, I'm sure the sheriff can talk more to this, but it says public policy of the state. All persons except those persons incarcerated in our state or local correctional facilities.
So, he's basically incarcerated.
Up in munising.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Much pleasure.
I would, I would say that we continue to, I, I would say we uphold this.
Deny the appeal.
Yeah. Does anybody have any objections to that? I would make the motion to deny the appeal as presented.
Support.
Been moved and supported to deny the inmate's FOIA appeal to the board. Discussion. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, next up is the WMRM C intergovernmental agreement. I think this is an every year type of thing. I don't see Eric here. But does anybody have any questions about this? Think you can find it. Oh, starts on page forty-four. If you want to read the five or six pages worth of intergovernmental agreements between West Michigan Regional Medical Consortium and us, I believe. Does anybody have any questions? If not, I would move to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the West Michigan Regional Medical Consortium and allow for signatures.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, next up is a warrant report. This is gonna be found on page fifty-two or starting on page fifty-two. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns about this? I did see in there that the Commission on Aging spent a hundred and ninety-two dollars on coffee. If nobody's got any questions, then I would move to approve warrant number zero six one two two zero two three in the amount of six hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and nine cents and allow for signatures.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to approve the warrant report, warrant number, and obtain the appropriate signatures. Discussion. If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, the consent agenda items four through eight. If nobody has any questions on those, I would move to place those on file.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to place the consent agenda items four through eight on file. Discussion. If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried.
And the rest, items nine through twelve are what other counties are doing as far as resolutions and some for your information things. If there is no questions on that, that will be your board correspondence for Monday, June 12th.
Mr. Vice Chairman Peterson.
You.
Up next, we have a 4:10 appointment with the Treasurer, Joanne Duken, to discuss hiring an administrative aide. She's with us. Welcome.
I thought about coming dressed as a crow.
Dressed as a what?
As a crow.
Crow?
Yeah.
Wouldn't have to eat yourself?
I'm here to admit that I'm eating crow. So.
I see that now on your.
Yeah.
Okay, tell us about eating crow.
I didn't realize how much Joyce did other than just title work, which I have contracted out, the title work. But all of the deeds that we're having to certify before they can get recorded have to be looked at. Joyce didn't, the majority of those. We're sharing that responsibility now without near the knowledge. That's what Joyce had. So that takes us a lot more time. We're requesting help when we can from James Rutherford, who handles the maps for the county. Because there's, we had one today with no parcel numbers at all on it and it's like, I think it was thirteen parcels for oil and mineral leases in different townships, different sections. That for us, not being as knowledgeable, it just takes us a lot more time. When we have someone that's not here, like we do right now, Angel's on vacation plus having some surgery, that puts a lot more responsibility on me, which I'm not, that's fine. And actually, we're still working out the responsibilities that both Joyce and Cindy did. So, right now, all of the local treasures are getting their tax rolls set up. That's, Cindy did all of that. Right now, I'm trying to handle that as best I can. I have an advantage, I think, because I used to work at a township, so I've got some knowledge there. But it's just more work and I really need another set of hands. And I apologize that I, I don't know, I guess I could say, I don't think I was prideful, but pride does go before a fall and I feel like that's what's gonna happen if I don't get some help in the office. I wish I didn't have to say that, but I think in light of wanting to do the best that we can to service the public, that I want to make sure that I've got enough people in the office to work.
Remind us, or maybe it's a more appropriate question for Brenda, give us the numbers on where we're at staffing wise currently and contracted services, what we had and what we've got now, where are we at? Are we, is there still, are we, are we still spending less than we did?
Oh, well, no, it's costing more.
So, we're spending more out of the current?
Out of the general fund?
No, no, out of your delinquent tax funds. She's spending more for the contracted person and then we're not gonna get any more general fund revenue from her to the general fund.
Ultimately, I mean, whether it's out of the delinquent revolving tax fund or the general fund, those are all county dollars that could come in to go for other services.
Well, the service that I'm paying for has to be, it's a statutory, just like the deeds.
Yeah, no, I understand.
So, I have to do it.
How much are you paying for this contract?
It's about two thousand, twenty-one hundred dollars a month. And the title search fee is a hundred and seventy-five dollars per parcel on any parcel that is forfeited. And there's more money in that fee, in that fund, than what it's gonna cost to pay this company to do our title work and send our notices and that type of.
I understand, but to that point or that line of thinking, we wouldn't want to spend all the money that the revolving tax fund generates on employees just because we can. Right?
I don't think that we are doing.
No, but I mean, you, you had commented that that's the only place or that's what that money is intended for, not the only place, but that's what that money is intended for. But it's not the intention or it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be prudent to, to just spend it all on a, on an unlimited number of employees just because it can be spent for that. Not that, not that you are, but I'm just pointing out that if, I think it's relevant that the amount of money we spend, whether it comes from the revolving tax fund or the general fund, I think that's a relevant number because whatever we don't spend there, we've got in the coffers to use for another purpose. So, I mean, I don't think we want to just be willy-nilly about it. And currently, we're spending more on that operation than what we did before. Is that, is that correct?
That's not my understanding.
Well, I just was looking at AP and we've spent seventy-eight thou, over seventy-eight thousand in the last year in this company.
That's not, that's also for when they put ads in the paper or there's other things that they also are, are billing me for, that they do.
They're putting ads in the paper, costing us seventy-eight thousand regardless of what they're doing? And you're gonna continue to use these people and hire another person?
Yes.
And Vicky has indicated that she will be retiring in the fall, but no date yet, and you'll, you'll want to replace her?
I don't know. I hope I don't have to. Hopefully by then, we would be.
But I know we sat here.
Level of training?
We sat here before and I, I remember vividly asking you.
Called me a liar.
Not gonna call you a liar. I, I believe that, I believe that misjudgments happen, but this was, this was already talked about once. So, if we get this other person, we're gonna continue to contract with this at the seventy-eight thousand? Right? Or whatever it costs.
The services that they're providing for my office, for the forfeiture foreclosure process, they would continue to do. They've been doing the posting of the properties and the auctions for years and not charging anything for that. Wasn't until I contracted with them to do the title work that there was any fees for anything.
Before that, did someone in your office do that or is this all?
Title work? Joyce did all of our title searches.
I think that's the point that we're trying to get our, our mind around. So, in the past, we didn't contract with this company.
Not for title work, no.
It was all done in-house.
Yes.
We didn't have any, we didn't have a cost to the company. Is that true? You said they did some things for free. So, we didn't have any cost. So, currently, we're at seventy-eight thousand. What, what's that gonna be on annualized? Yes.
That was for a year.
Oh, that's, that's a year.
From this June to last June.
So, now we're spending seventy-eight thousand on a company, outside company to do work that previously had been done in-house. Is that accurate? And then if we hired this, if we fill this position again, we're gonna be back to the same staffing level that we had previously and be spending the same amount of money staff-wise that we did previously. But we're gonna essentially be spending seventy-eight thousand more for that treasure operation because of the contract. Am I, is that accurate or am I missing something?
It's, it's accurate to, I can't guarantee that it's always gonna be that much money.
Sure.
But it's based partly on how many parcels, but it's based partly on how many parcels are forfeited that they're doing the work on.
If you got the right person hired here, if this was granted and you got the right person, is it conceivable that at some point that could be done in-house again?
Certainly.
And the contract would go away? So, that answers my questions as far as the logistics of where we were and where we are. If, if this is granted, how do we, how do we pay for that at this venture?
Just out of the general fund?
Is that allowed? Is that doable?
Well, yeah, we can do it. We won't be getting reimbursed for that, but it's doable.
I guess to that point, I would, I'm curious as to what offices have been paying for their employees' wages, other than mine.
Doesn't the registered deeds pay for one of their tax fund?
No, I hate that argument because every office isn't a revenue center. There's very few offices that have the ability to raise revenue to pay for their own employees and I, I frankly don't agree with the assessment that you're paying for them because you collect that money. I mean, to use that argument, that would just say all the money that the treasurer's office brings in should be spent in the treasurer's office because you collect it. I don't, I don't think the fact that the treasurer's office collects money makes you any more entitled to spending that on employees than the maintenance department because everybody doesn't have that same ability.
That wasn't my point. My, my point is that that has been back when the county was really hurting the money. That was basically an offer to help offset the general fund costs. That's how that all started. And I honestly feel that the general fund's in a totally different position now
I agree.
than what it was back in sixteen.
I agree, but I think.
So, I feel like our office is doing the level of work that we need to do, we need the employees. Just, I mean, just the interest that the funds have earned since January, just the general fund in part of, in two places where there's money. It's in excess of four hundred thousand dollars in interest earned. So, I can't sit here and feel like I'm putting a big burden on the general fund by asking for another employee.
But is that, I, I don't discount all the things that you said and it's wonderful that we're earning a higher interest rate and we're in a better place financially. But to use that logic would be that, say Doug in the maintenance department can't, can't make that same argument. He might need more employees, but he can't come and tell us all the interest he's earning and the amount of money that he's collecting because his office doesn't have that ability to do that. But that doesn't mean, in my opinion, that the maintenance guys should be second fiddle to any other office here. We've gotta collectively run the county with the money we've got coming in and because you collect it, doesn't make.
I don't have any problem with that. I just feel like, I don't feel like I'm asking for too much where I'm at.
I don't know that I disagree with that. I, I think that it's, it's, it's seventy-some thousand dollars more than what that operation cost last year. I don't know that I.
Well, you have to take out the wages that were spent to do the service.
Up to this point.
Well, if you look at a year, what Joyce's wages were.
But now going forward, we're gonna, we're gonna have both. Up to this point.
Yes.
You're right. We, we didn't have Joyce's and it, and it was a wash or, or maybe an advantage, but going forward, we're gonna have both. So, then that, that's where it would cost us the additional.
And, and one reason that I chose to go to Title Check is the name of the company was because of their knowledge and expertise. And to be able to find someone to fill Joyce's shoes, to do all of the work that she did on title work.
I agree. I'd, I'd be willing to, I, I personally could vote to support this if it's, if it's your intention to try and hire, hire someone with the knowledge and ability in your office to, to look strongly at taking that contracted service back in-house and get back to the, or some of it, I guess, make some.
I, I certainly would be trying to get someone that can fulfill some of the other things that Joyce did too. Because that's where I'm really needing it. Plus, when somebody's not here, like when Vicky was off with COVID, you know?
I agree.
We had, you know, one new person out front and two in the back and we are earning more money, but the processes involved right now with the banking takes more time in our office.
In ours too.
Yep.
So, just to clarify one thing that Joanne said when she referred to four hundred thousand dollars in the general fund, she's referring to the pooled account, which at the end of the fiscal year, that gets spread across all the funds that are in that pooled account. So, not all of that's gonna stay in the general fund. It's gonna get spread.
I misspoke. I should have centered it.
Is there any expenses attached to this new bank? I know I see Brink's, Brink's is being paid weekly, if not more, more often. That's a expense we didn't have before.
The, the expenses so far don't come anywhere near to the interest that's being earned for what we're paying.
Anyone else have any questions for the treasurer?
Yeah, um, refresh my memory if you can. When we decided to go with one less employee and do this contract service, did we give the other employees raises? Where was that? Okay. They're still at the same rate they were. Okay.
We just hired Danielle at the top of the scale instead of the bottom.
Okay.
But she's on the budget. You have her listed as just an office assistant, correct? Not as what Cindy and Joyce were?
No, I think she's an administrative aide. I'll have a look.
Any other questions for the treasurer?
I'm working. Yeah, I'm waiting for the program to come up.
What was the cost of this employee? Would that be?
Which one?
What would the cost of this employee be if we hired another person here?
Um, I can give you a ballpark. No, Danielle was hired as administrative aide in March. Same as your other gals.
Is Vicki an administrative aide?
Mm-hmm. They're all administrative aide.
I thought Joyce and Cindy had another.
No, you made her administrative aide when she was going to do dog census. Vicki was going to do dog census work. That was the deal. We'd make her administrative aide if she did dog census stuff. Which I don't think is being done anymore.
Is dog census being done?
I don't know.
I guess I had in my mind with, with just bare minimum, administrative aide probably is going to be sixty to seventy thousand depending on insurance.
Right, depending on insurance. So, uh, right now the cost of, say, someone in the ballpark of two-person insurance. All I have budgeted is at top of the scale because everyone down there is at top of the scale. That's a sixty-eight thousand dollar expense. And I only budgeted for four people in that office for next year, so we'd have to add that. But that can be done still?
What do you think? I, I, I guess I think this is a, it's an ask. It is what it is. If, if, we, we've done this dance a hundred times. If our elected official or our department head, you know, thinks they need this, I, I think we need to honor that. Obviously, uh, Joanna's, has admitted that she got a little loud over her skis and, and that's admirable and, uh, I, I don't like, I don't like the double, double dip of the cost, but I don't think we're going to be able to find somebody to just step right in and, and replace Joyce. It just probably isn't going to happen, but it could down the road. I guess you could look at it as an investment. We could be investing in someone that will eventually eliminate this seventy-eight thousand dollars. But I don't know. I mean, we could go, we could go down a delinquent tax fund hole if you'd like, but I don't want to make that discussion come to fruition today. Uh, in the, in the spirit of moving things along, I would move to allow the treasurer to post and hire an administrative aide with applications due by June thirtieth.
Support? It's been moved and supported to allow the treasurer to post and hire an administrative aide. Applications due by six thirty twenty-three. Discussion. Don't want to beat a dead horse. Under discussion. So when we had the, the meltdown of, in eighteen?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. That wasn't any fun for, for anyone. And I don't want to get back in that position and, and how, how we got there was spending more in a year than we're taking in. And it was directly related to these kind of asks that are, this is going to essentially be a seventy-eight thousand dollar swing. And, and right now we've got the money and it's easier to make that decision and go forward with it. But can't do that for everyone or we're going to find ourselves right back in that place. So I hope you appreciate the, the dilemma and the, I guess, the discussion that we've had to try and figure out the, the right thing to do and just trying to balance all the balls in the air and make it work for everyone.
Appreciate that and I'm definitely going to try and do the best we can to hire someone that will be able to really pick up the slack and, and will be able to service the county.
Very good. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Good luck. Thank you. Four twenty, we have the sheriff with us to discuss inmate electronic records management service.
Uh, what you have in front of you is a proposal for electronic health records for inmates. The jail doctor has recommended that we go to this. Currently, we have a system in place for, um, jail medical records that's very antiquated, I would say, uh, paper-based. I don't know if, I'm sure you guys realized the last time you were in the doctor's office, if you see paper at all. It's cumbersome. The system that he has recommended is Practice Fusion. And in the sheets that I attached, there's prices for two other services for the, the health records platform. This is going to provide an improved quality of care as well as the doctor being able to do more things remotely or approve medications or, or disapprove medications quicker, especially on the weekends for the inmates and their healthcare needs.
Is that per inmate?
No, that's a monthly cost for the system. So it's a hundred and forty-nine dollars a month, which comes out to eighteen hundred-ish a year for the platform. That's the whole platform.
Vice Chairman.
That's your vice chairman Peterson.
Uh, I, I've had a little bit of experience with this. I know that, uh, we had, there was a little mix-up with a constituent of mine that wasn't able to get their, um, meds that they needed and, uh, would this, would this help with that?
I assume so, yes. I think that particular case, uh, when I looked into it, he came in on a Friday and we had meds approved on the Sunday. So he had to see the nurse first and the nurse put the order into the doctor and that type of thing. So this would speed that up definitely, that process up.
I would move to approve the Practice Fusion Electronic Health Record Service for a hundred and forty-nine dollars per month as presented.
So moved and supported to approve the Practice Fusion Electronic Health Record Service at a cost of a hundred and forty-nine dollars per month for the jail. Discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. And I was here, I think, also for the, the blight issue as well. Are we going to discuss that or, I don't know if we wanted to do that now or I, I think Andrea is waiting. In the back.
I guess, Andrea, if we take up the other issue with the sheriff right now, is that going to inconvenience you? Okay. Where do we want to start?
Don't look at me. I didn't know, I didn't know we were doing this. I'm not really prepared. I guess.
What part of that did you think we were going to talk about?
Well, I thought, Brenda had sent me an email that, um, to invite me to this meeting. Several weeks back and I know.
I think the crux of that is, as you probably followed along, we've, we've initiated a, a new ordinance. The county attorney says that the one we've got isn't enforceable because we don't have county zoning. And I guess I'm getting a second hand that you were still writing under the old one because the district judge was still taking those cases.
Well, yeah, so, so, you know, my position has been, well, first off, let me, let me back up.
Let's just go through it.
Okay.
Is that accurate to this, to that point?
Well, um, I would say that the ordinance, I, I've never received anything from, from the board or an attorney or anybody saying that the ordinance wasn't valid. And it's never been struck down in court. So my position has been, the tool is there and so, yes, I've been using it and I can, I'll continue.
Okay, so say we're telling you now that the county attorney says that it's not legal to do, would you continue to write under the old one?
I, you know, I.
And we asked the judge to this too and he's not available to comment on it because it's a.
Well, he's not going to make a predetermination type thing. I, I guess what I would say is, you know, if the ordinance is there, I have an obligation to enforce it. I would say if it's, if it's illegal, I think the ball would be in the board's court to rescind it. And, and you could.
That's what our intention was or what we were trying to do. And so we had, we had asked our council to draft a new one. And the intention of that is that it would be universal. Any township that wanted help from the sheriff's department enforcing it could, could adopt it as their own, as a township ordinance. And then it would be similar to the one that we've got, although it wouldn't be a county ordinance. It would be every township that wanted in would adopt it. So when we heard that you were continuing to still write under the old one and the judge was continuing to honor the old one and that we're going that way, we've got a ton of constituents and township boards are saying, why are you fiddling with it? The old one is, you know, you've got one, one county attorney saying it's not legal. The sheriff and the judge are still comfortable with the one we've currently got. And frankly, we're tired of beating our head against the wall trying to fix it if it's not broken. So that was the genesis of the meeting between you and the judges to get everybody in the room and figure out, are we just going to go for, are we going to continue to operate on the old ones? Is everybody comfortable with that? Do we need to change to a new one? And then we've got a sample that you provided to us from the village Ashley. I believe.
Is that the Grashit ordinance?
Yeah, that's the Grashit.
Yeah, the, the Grashit ordinance. So there's a number of different options and, and, and I guess I'll back up just a minute as well. You know, I, I don't want this to be an issue that we, we butt heads on. I think we both have a real common goal here.
Yeah, we're just trying to fake, we just want to get everybody in the room and figure out what the best solution is.
Yep, yep. And, um, you know, I, I, the, the, the template that the county attorney drafted, uh, I think is just way too cumbersome and, and it, it, it really muddies the waters, so to speak.
It could very well be, but the intention of that was just that. That was the first run at it. Let's let everybody take a look at it and see what needs to be tailored differently. But the, the elephant in the room continues to be, why are we going forward with it at all if the sheriff and the judge are comfortable writing under the old ordinance? So that's really what we have to address. Are you guys on board for a change or do you want to leave it alone?
If you're, if you're, if your attorney is going to, uh, you know, says it's, it's not enforceable and it eventually gets struck down, then we will be in it.
Well, the judge is going to be the first step in striking it down and if he's comfortable continuing, I don't, you know, you can ask ten attorneys to get ten different opinions. There was an attorney at some point that thought it was good because he wrote it for.
Probably several because it's been around since nineteen seventy-three in one way, shape or, or form. You know, I, I would say this, that it doesn't matter if it's at the township level or the county level. These, these complaints are going to take a long time. You know, and I understand people's frustrations with that. They call and they want something done right now. We've taken the approach that if, if we go and there's a violation and the, the landowner is cooperative, it can still take months and months because a lot of times there's other things that come into play such as, uh, sometimes mental health issues, um, those types of things. In fact, I brought kind of an example of, uh, one that we handled just north of Central Motcom Schools. And if you drive by, uh, you'll see, uh, there was a trailer there. Just recently, uh, is, is all cleaned up now. That was about a six-month process. Lieutenant George had handled that complaint and that was with cooperative person. So there were, there were, and if people are, are cleaning up, if they're trying to make progress, we're not going to ding them with a ticket. Okay? So we tell them thirty days and then thirty days is up, but there's some progress made, made towards that. We're going to let them continue to clean up because the, the goal is not to hammer them with a ticket. The goal is to get the stuff cleaned up. You know, I think at the, at the, I prefer something at the county level because it is uniform. And so I understand the, and appreciate the, uh, the efforts to, to keep it, um, even at the township level, uniform. It would be, I think inherently not uniform though, if it's at the township level simply because there's twenty different township attorneys that would be enforcing that if it came to a, a, a formal hearing or whatnot. So, um, you know, the other big thing that I, I would like, and I'm not sure that we can do it in, with our current ordinance, is some type of abatement. So the judge ordering somebody to clean it up. And if they don't, then the township or the county or somebody could go in and physically clean it up themselves.
Is that, did you say that's allowable under our current?
I don't know if it is. You know, we've, we've struggled with it and I'm, and I'm sure you'll, you'll remember the, uh, and it's still an ongoing issue, uh, up in the panhandle. There's a very heinous violation that we've been dealing with. That particular one is an uncooperative person. And, uh, you know, that's taken months and months and months and months. And, uh, they have a few more months to clean it up right now. Not by our choice, but, um, that's the state of it. We've also got Eagle and, and we're working with, uh, some other, some other angles to try to get it cleaned up. So, you know, we're working at these, um, but they're going to take time. And that doesn't matter if it's, it's at the township level, if they have their own ordinances or we have, we have an ordinance. It's going to take time.
Well, I think what we really don't want to see happen is for us to continue or to move forward with this thought of the townships all adopting something. Only for you to ultimately say, I can't work with this. You guys screwed, I had a plan in place. Now you guys changed it and this won't work. So you're, you're really holding all the cards. So you really need to be the one that says, um, let's stay with the system we've got because it's still working.
I, I, you know.
Let's adopt.
Either way this goes, I'm not, I'm not going to just turn my back on the issue, um, you know. I would prefer to have a, a system like we do. Now, if that gets struck down, then that's not my, my choice.
Well, is it something that if it's not broke, don't fix it? If the judge currently is not striking it down and we're rolling along with that, is that the place that we hang our hat for now?
For now, I think so, yeah.
Is that your, is that your preference as the guy tasked with enforcing it?
Yep. I, I mean, I mean, when you have, if you have, if you have twenty, twenty townships that get on board with this and, and even if they pass the exact same ordinance, now I, I run into kind of the same thing I do with like noise ordinances and those types of things that who's this township's attorney?
Well, it's our understanding that if the sheriff's department wrote the ticket or the, the citation, that it would still be enforced by the prosecutor. Is that not true?
We can ask her.
Um, not necessarily. It was a township ordinance, the township hires your attorney.
Township ordinance that allows the sheriff to enforce it and he, he enforces it, you wouldn't act as the.
Correct.
Well, I think that's a, that's not how we've been led to believe and I think that's a real game changer. I don't think any of the towns, I mean, we're having trouble getting buy-in from townships as it is. Only to the, I guess, to the. I mean, we're having trouble getting buy-in from townships as it is, only to the, I guess to the extent that if they don't, they don't take advantage of the county enforcement, they can still do their own thing. But.
And, and some of them do.
Ones that have supported it aren't going to like the idea of that. So.
And, and some of them do. Some of them handle these through their own zoning. Um, some of them, you know, informally take care of them on their own.
Yeah, not very effectively, honestly.
Well, you could say the same thing about, about us. If you, if you judge it by the amount of time that it takes. Cause some of these, and I mean, I, and I brought a whole list. I, I mean, we have about a dozen that are still open right now that we're, we're actively working.
I guess something relevant in my mind at, at making a decision on this, when this whole thing started, I, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, either one of you. Commissioner Peterson brought it to the board saying that a, a good share of the percentage of complaints he gets as a commissioner deal with blight. And should we ramp, ramp up our efforts to enforce that? And I believe you were in the audience and said, and I'm paraphrasing, but I got this. We currently do this. We've got a plan in place. We're citing people all the time and, and we're going forward with it. So with that, knowing, knowing how many violations are out there in the townships that I represent, what is a reasonable number of these cases that your department could start new in a month? Just to get us a feel for.
We're, we're handling these like any other complaint that comes in. So, um, you know, I, I don't know. As I give you a number, just start.
Twenty townships, could you, could you start a new case for every township every month? Could you start 20 new?
Every month? Oh, yeah.
Could you start two for every township a month?
Um, probably we, yeah, we don't, uh, right now. Um, you know, I, what I, what I tell people and when I go to the townships, I say, if you want to report one, call into dispatch and report it and we'll handle it just like any other complaint.
That's what I've been advising.
So, so I look at these just like any other complaint. Somebody calls in a, um, you know, a suspicious person or, uh, M D O P to a mailbox or, or anything like that. Uh, um, you know.
And I know that it changes based on your other workload, but for us to get a feel for whether the process we've gotten places is at least realistic, what would, what's a number, what's a ballpark number that would you start? Three cases for each township a month? You mean six, 60 cases reasonable?
I, you know, I, I tell you what, I would say, uh, um, you know, one to two a month. You know, how about that? I think that's a.
Something to go by.
I, I don't think every township is gonna, gonna have that. Some won't. Some, some may have more, uh, you know, um. I guess another, another kind of point to just, or just something I want to point out is, is, I mean, personally remember and, and, and you brought it up earlier. Uh, 2016, we didn't have anybody out roaming around. So nobody was doing these. And so as we ramp up and, and, and of course I know you're aware of it. Hiring is an issue, uh, but we do have some people and we will, we'll take care of these if we can.
So just to kind of bring the thing full circle or get our mind around it. If, if we leave it alone, you're comfortable and we believe the judge is at this point as well. You can probably start between 20 and 40 new cases a month on average. If the townships choose to.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, I tell them now just to call it in.
Yeah.
You know?
So I don't know what.
Well, and I, I think when this whole, this whole thing started, I, I was more pushing for a little bit more oomph behind it. I don't, I don't remember exactly what it is right now, but I think it was the first citation was a hundred dollars and the second was 250 or. It just doesn't seem, you know, if somebody was really wanting to stay where they were and not do any work, 350 bucks isn't really a big deal.
And, and, and I'll tell you, in our approach, as we got back into these, uh, these types of complaints, our approach, uh, uh, you know, I would say that we, we kind of dropped the ball on it. We, we had, I don't know if that's accurate totally, but we would go write a ticket and then be done with it. Uh, and then the people never, never cleaned up. We'd get a, nobody would call again and then just be the end of it. So, so now we've put a system in place that we're following up a little bit more, uh, with those, uh, and, uh, and, uh, working with the court. And if, uh, the person isn't cleaning up, the court can order them to international. So I, I don't know if that would include abatement, if, if the judge could, if they refuse, absolutely refuse, uh, you know, they can hold them in contempt. But, uh, um, I don't know if that would include abatement where the judge could order, um, you know, the township or the county or whoever to, um,
Order and clean up and assess their taxes for the cost.
That's, that's the sys, that's, if you really want teeth in it, that's the end game that would solve the problem. Um, you know.
I guess that was, I, I guess that was where I, I think that's where this whole discussion started was we tasked our controller with saying, okay, let's talk to a lawyer and figure out what we can do to put in more teeth or abatements or money and everything else. And they kick back, hey, we don't think this is even legal.
What would our attorney say if we said, we hear your, we hear you on your advice that this is enforceable. However, our judge and our sheriff are willing to continue to go forward with it. What would it take for us to raise the, raise the stakes of the violation for one? And secondly, what mechanism would we need to do to make that provision where if it's not cleaned up, it gets assessed?
I, I would, I would.
I don't think you would because he's already told us it's illegal.
I would, I would, uh, I guess I would recommend, um, just, you know, the judge, the judge is kind of, we're kind of working on that right now. Um, uh, I mean, the judge is doing that. So I, I would kind of let, let it just happen. Yeah.
And you said you've got a number of counties that have told you that it's illegal.
Other county administrators tell me it was illegal. Jackson County, Antrim County, Grashit County.
Yeah, there may be a point in time when, when it gets struck down.
Boigun County.
I, I don't know. But it's, it's a tool that I have and it's a tool that is, is fairly, um, relatively easy for us to, to do. It just takes time to get them done.
I guess I'm still confused with the disconnect between the sheriff can enforce it, but the township hires their own attorney. Uh, I don't get that.
This current one, it wouldn't be that. You're, you're clear on that, right?
The illegal one. Illegal one, they're going to.
How many have just hired their own attorneys for years to hire county, they adopted pretty much, um, most of the criminal code, the misdemeanor stuff. And they have a city attorney who forces, I don't do city rebuilds, all battery, you know, driving, you know, a number of cases plus all, you know, whatever. Civil stuff that they want to do.
Why don't you come up, Andrew? You're going to be next on the agenda anyway. Get your chair warmed up.
Other townships have done the same. They employ, uh, local attorneys or out of town, out of town attorneys. I mean, I'm not saying they're all local. Carson City used to employ Tom Wilson to do, um, a number of their local, you know, um, ordinance prosecution. So it's not anything new. I think Darren Dode, even the last time he was here, um, made reference that he's done that. Um, that the, that the Cato Township has had to hire, um, attorneys to enforce stuff like this. So it's not new to them. Okay. It's just not, it's not new.
But under the current plan, you would, you would, you would prosecute those if under the current ordinance, county ordinance that might.
I, I think we have.
Yeah.
If.
If it gets to that point.
If it gets to that point, yes. Yeah.
That's where the disconnect happens for me. So, okay, our sheriff goes out and assesses all these penalties and he wants to take it to the next step. Where, where does the township attorney fit in?
It's a civil infraction. That's why.
Under the one or the current one?
The current one. Where does the township attorney fit in?
It does. Yeah. The township has to adopt an ordinance in order to enforce it. And then if they're going to adopt and enforce a local ordinance, they will hire an attorney to do that.
Well, our sheriff is sitting here saying that he's enforcing township ordinances right now.
Well, that's, uh, you know, if he wants, he can do that. Nothing says he can't. But again, if he's going to enforce it, he's still enforcing a township ordinance. So the township's got to, to hire their own attorney to pursue it. I mean.
See where this is just muddy or no good.
So this is a civil infraction. So we're not going to see a majority of these anyways. A civil infraction doesn't even, you don't even get a lawyer.
Like the one that Commissioner Painter was talking about ahead of the meeting or Chris, there are several ordinances that Crystal has on the book. They don't have zoning, but they have ordinances. So if, if he does an ordinance violation for a township, that's where the township's on the hook to, to try it or to go through with it.
Correct.
If he's, he's ticketing something on this county ordinance, even though it's not legal according to our attorney, that's the county ordinance then. If it got to that point, the county prosecutor would do it, but they're pointing out that they're, they're just civil infractions anyway. They're not.
Yeah, county ordinance, state law. Come to me. Township ordinance goes to the township.
So it comes, one thing for me, it comes back to is if we wanted to change it from a civil infraction to a misdemeanor, our, our guy isn't going to touch it. Now that he's told us he don't, and any of the changes we want to make, he's not going to do. So we're, we're still just kind of in that mold.
Back in 04, like 430.
Frankly, I don't see that, that there's a better option. It's always just going to slow down us. We're going to spend a bunch of money. We're going to have something that's, that's no different than what we got. The thing still boils down to the amount of time that the sheriff's department can spend doing these calls, claims, and as long as he's comfortable writing under the current one and the judge is comfortable taking those as they currently are, uh, maybe we leave it alone.
The, the one that was drafted by the attorney, would, did they make it a misdemeanor or did it keep it a civil infraction?
I think that was a mystery, I don't remember.
Yeah.
And that may be the difference in why he thinks something is up. Cause this is just a civil infraction. It's a ticket. It's a, it's a civil offense essentially. All you can do is find somebody for that. You can't put them in jail.
I think his take was that it, that we don't have county zoning. So we don't have the ability to have a county blight ordinance. But that, that in itself isn't consistent with like what, what townships do. Uh, Commissioner Painter was talking about a noise ordinance and something else. What township?
We used to have it. Well, the counting number used to have a noise and we got rid of it.
But Crystal doesn't have, uh, zoning, but they've got that noise ordinance. What would be the diff, the county doesn't have countywide zoning, but we've got a blight ordinance. So I don't know that it's.
This is where it just gets unbelievably muddy to me.
It sure is. And that's, I guess.
And it just, I feel like it doesn't have to be this complicated.
You wrote, it was a civil infraction, the one that the attorney did.
So it's the same.
But I thought it stepped up like a third.
I think the money was stepped up.
The second was higher money and third was a possible misdemeanor. Ours, yeah. Ours is a second offense was.
So there's a step up in the current one.
But again, it's only a civil infraction. So that, I guess that's where, that's where this all started with me and, 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 and taking the sheriff at his word, he says he's, he's working harder. But I, I have constituents that reach out consistently and say, I've made a complaint. I've gone through this and it goes to a civil infraction. And then what else can we do? I mean, that, you, you know, just as well as I do, you both do. It's that you can, you can give somebody a civil infraction and then, okay, well, I'll, I'll just keep on living my life. They're not going to toss me in jail. They're not going to, you know, they're not going to assess my taxes.
But that, that's why right now the, the judge is, um, I believe, uh, holding the, the fines and costs in the balance.
Specifically the one I did, if I, if I can see.
Yes.
Warranted judgment, had a cleanup. You understood it. 30 days later, maybe a box is. Hunt him down, wrote him a ticket. In the old days, it would be, yeah, within 14 days per spot. And that's where the situation would be. The people go pay. And then again, we, we were viewing it like we do traffic tickets, where we didn't do it anymore. Now, um, there is no 14 day appearance. We are telling them the court's going to set a date. It was actually an informal hearing in front of magistrate. On that particular one, magistrate found him responsible, tagged him, not only with the fines, but court costs on as well. I believe it was a thousand dollars instead. And then there was a discussion between the defendant and the court. They gave him a certain date and said, if by this date you've got it cleaned up, your thousand dollars will be waived. If it's not cleaned up by this date, you then owe the court a thousand dollars. What we do is we don't close a complaint out. We file it through to the very end now in that particular one. Fortunately, as I reached out to the township, they coordinated the sale to the school. It's got a school block property, so they cleaned it up. This particular gentleman, at the expiration of his cleanup period, not only would he bend down, fine that one thousand dollars. I was ready to turn around and give him another ticket, which wrote about a second offense ticket, which helps up events. So if you start getting every couple of months, holding the court a thousand dollars at a time, I can think that's going to get people's attention. Unlike the old days, like you bring about, you know, fifty dollar fine once every three years or a ticket to show them something.
Where, where is all of this written that you can do that?
That we can do what?
The thousand dollars and no 14 days.
Court does that. Yeah.
Man, it's just, it's just muddy to me.
Well, it sounds, it sounds like by, like what you just indicated in the sheriff earlier, this is a stepped up effort in the last, what, six months?
Yeah, about the time that was brought up by.
Three months. So.
Six, eight months.
So maybe we've got a, maybe we, maybe we're on the right track. But that's what I keep coming back to. Maybe the thing we've got is worth giving it a try. It sounds like they're.
I'm fine with it.
As I review the reports and I, I looked to make sure the sheriff's next office was updated. We do get a great deal of compliance. We work with people. Again, it might not happen 30 days, it might not happen 60 days. But as long as we get that progression forward to getting, um, people to comply with the ordinance, we've been getting quite successful at that. I had to issue a lot of tickets. Cause I think that's our whole goal is just to get the county.
I, I agree. I mean, there's townships that have talked about not assessing a fine, but using the money to buy them a dumpster. So, so I don't think anybody's looking for money to, to fine people. It, it's compliance that everybody wants.
There's two townships that do that. We try to share that resource with, with the people when we show up. We know that there's something out there, the township's rolled out. We share that information with, wow, yeah.
And a lot more of the townships are doing that now and they're giving vouchers and they're having cleanup days and that type of thing. And I think that's, that's helping, especially those people that can't afford it.
Well, that was sort of an impromptu discussion about the blight thing. And we've got another appointment with the prosecutor at 4:30 that we're half an hour late on. What's your, what's your pleasure?
I'm, I'm good. I mean, I don't, I, I still don't know what, what's up from down, but if we're, if we're enforcing it and that's, and we're ramping up our efforts, here we go. Let's, let's go.
Maybe in the spirit of, of communication back to the townships, if we could, could we get some kind of a update on this topic? Maybe next court, in a quarter at a time, so that we could give some follow-up back to the townships on what's being done on this issue. Is that?
Yeah, I can, uh, I can come up, uh, I don't know, um, September, October.
How many new ones we've opened? How many, what we've seen for compliance? How many are?
Sure. And, and, and like I said, you know, and not to discount, uh, uh, what your attorney had said, if it does get struck down, then I'll come back and, I mean, then it's game over for me, but.
Yeah. I get it. Well, but I think we can jump off that bridge when we get to.
Okay.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep. Thank you.
Up next is our 4:30 with the prosecutor to discuss a APA position. Go ahead, Andrew.
So, um, it's, my position has been advertised for at least one month and I have gotten zero resumes. So this is a think out of the box kind of a solution, temporary, temporary fix to my problem. Tammy retires June 30th, but we approached her, Ryan, Troy and I, and she has agreed, um, to contract with us to just handle the abuse neglect cases. Um, and my, my number is wrong. I thought it was 85 an hour, but it's 80 an hour. So it'd be 4,000 a month. Um, so a little bit less. But, um, uh, so she would contract for 50 hours a month to do the abuse neglect cases in probate court.
How does that compare to what her salary would have been on the files?
Uh, well, she would, it, it wouldn't eat up the whole thing. Um, it would be, I, I think I did it. If I did my math right, she gets 69,000 a year. Divide that by 12, it's 5750 a month. I'm not sure if that's really how you do it. So if you minus the 4,000 a month, there's still 17 that I'm not using, 700 dollars.
Would she have, would she have gotten health insurance? Any other benefits?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
And this wouldn't?
No, it's just, it's just, this is just a straight money.
This is clearly cheaper for the county to go this way than when she, when she was an employee.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I just want to make sure we're not.
We're paying her $33 an hour right now. So the only, the reason I'm asking for eight is because that's what the going rate is in probate court. That, that when they hire or kind of, uh, you know, appoint attorneys in probate court, it's $80 an hour. She's not going to do it for less. I mean.
I just don't want to set the precedent that every county employee resigns, retires and comes back as a contract employee at a higher rate.
Again, I have gotten zero resumes. Again, I have gotten zero resumes for this position, and it's all due to the wage, I know it is.
I understand, I still think we have to be cognizant of setting ourselves up for everybody wanting to be a.
Sure.
Contract employee, and.
I, I guess it would come down to our, you know, are people applying for the, the regular position, I mean, if I was getting resumes, I would think you guys would say, absolutely not, we're not going to do this, because that's, you're, you're right, but when other attorneys, under similar circumstances, are getting eighty dollars an hour, which is a hell of a lot cheaper than, um, on the criminal side, where they're getting a hundred and forty dollars an hour, um, this is still a bargain, um, and to, to keep her institutional knowledge of abuse neglect cases and all the stuff that goes with those, um, to me is invaluable into my office, I mean, I have five attorneys for a reason, we are very busy, um, and so her being able to at least take that off our plate, we, we will, the rest of my attorneys will still have to cover the delinquency, which again, has gone through the roof lately, um, for whatever reason, um, so everything is just ramped up.
Everything runs downhill, we're contemplating a stronger blight ordinance to send you more.
Yeah, right, so you want to send me more cases.
We're squeezing your shoes about whether or not you can have another employee, I mean, every, everything's related.
I agree.
But we've got to find that balance, we've got to find that happy moment, we can.
But again, I'm not spending money I don't have, I mean, she makes a salary, she's not going to get that salary, so I'm going to use part of her salary to pay her to do these cases.
Why doesn't that square if, if, if this isn't a cheaper option, how do we get where it's, it's costing us fifty-seven, she divided her annual by twelve months to come up with?
Well, we have twenty-six pay periods, not twenty-four.
I just did fifty-two weeks, so I guess I didn't.
So is this, I, I guess, is this going to be?
Temporary.
But, right, but is it, once she, once you can fill that position, Tammy's no longer going to work here?
Yeah, and she understands it, it's like, it's a month a month thing, she, she understands that if I can fill it, um, she's done, and she's, she's fine with that, I mean, she'd prefer to be retired, but she's really doing a total favor of my thing.
So if we, if we included language in this motion that says, uh, starting July first and, uh, to expire when the position is filled, you'd be okay with that?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, no, this is, I, like I said, this is temporary, I don't, I wouldn't want to continue this for any longer than necessary, because it's, it's ju, it's, while it'll be helpful, it still isn't, I still need a full body to do the whole probate court work, which includes delinquency, mental health, uh, commitment hearings, um, you know, whatever else comes up in that court, so, um, this is strictly temporary till I can hopefully find somebody sooner than later. I mean, we're still advertising, in fact, I had, um, Rochelle, uh, send the notice out to law schools in Michigan, put it on their, their board, because right now, it was just on our website, and I, I put it on the PAM, the Prosecutor's Association, I was like, that's where, but I mean, to be honest, there's probably, I don't know, twelve to fifteen other openings across the state, I mean, you can go practically any county and get a prosecutor job right now, because there's, they're everywhere.
There's just a bunch of dirtbags breaking the law everywhere, is what you're saying.
Well, that is true, no, I don't know if they're all dirtbags, but.
What did you guys, what did you guys figure out here?
The controller's analysis, I guess, is that this is, this is cheaper.
Well, we're getting, only getting fifty dollars a month out of her compared to a hundred and sixty, that's the difference.
That's really different, okay.
But, I mean, she, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to add, we'll get, I said a fifty percent rebate, because it's, uh, we're under contract with DHS, I'm sorry, forgot about that, so we're actually not paying the full four, we'll get, we'll get money back.
Even though she's contracted and not an employee no longer?
Sure, it's still my contract, I'm just using somebody else to do it, I don't know why that would matter, she's still going to build DHS, she's still going to build DHS.
Still providing that service to DHS.
Yeah, yeah, through my office, I mean, she's sort of a pseudo-still employee, wouldn't she be, I mean, I, I, we're going to pay her back with her.
I think it's, I think it's where we can make an argue, I, I just don't want to set us up for the fact of other people saying, hey, I'm, I'm leaving, and knowing that the department head is going to struggle to fill the position, and then come, hey, I, I would come back as a contract employee, just don't want to get there, but I think there's a ton of, a ton of wiggle room why that won't happen, this.
I, I mean, yeah.
But are we, is she expecting to be paid through payroll then, instead of through accounts payment, with a ten ninety-nine at the end of the year? Does that make some sense to?
Wouldn't it be a ten ninety-nine, because she'd be a contract employee?
Right, and a contract, and if that's the case, if she's going to be paid through AP, I wouldn't be paying her through salary, a salary line item, I'd be paying her through contract labor.
Okay, so what does that?
So I don't know what that means for your DHS thing, that's when I'm trying to correlate, connect all the dots here.
I don't think they care, they just want that service provided, and how, how you go about hiring your people, they, they shouldn't care what that is.
Because honestly, if they, if I had to tell them we couldn't do it anymore, I think they'd be paying way more than eighty dollars an hour, if they had a contract, maybe the other attorneys would probably be asking for one forty, or better, or whatever.
Would you be comfortable on us endorsing this contingent on the DHS contract still being, or the payments still being allowed?
Again, I don't, I mean.
We're, it's probably.
We're still just using her salary, though, I guess I don't, it's still not going to be, it's not, we're not going to, I'm not going to.
Are you talking about the CRP program when you say DHS?
Four E.
Oh, okay.
Four E, the four E program.
I don't see where they could, they care, couldn't care less, they just want it done.
Cases handled, yeah, and this is going to be such a smoother transition for them, because they're used to Tammy, and they, you know, we have a good working relationship with them, that they're just gonna, they're not even going to know.
That's what I was going to say.
They're not even going to know, I'm not going to tell them that, I mean, there's going to be no difference to that.
Seamless.
Yeah, I mean, she's gonna.
It does make a difference in the GL, though.
In the what?
Because I send the general ledger to Donna Schmiegel every month.
Oh.
For you guys, and it's not going to show up under a salary line item anymore, it's going to be down here under contractual, contractor pay, so it may ma, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is it going to make a difference?
Well, at, at the end of the day, I mean, it's, it's, it's forty-two, forty-two hundred a month.
No, four thousand. Four thousand.
Okay, four thousand a month, Andrea needs help right now, is it something we just say, okay, this is temporary, if we do find out that DHI, DHS doesn't reimburse or anything else, we revisit it from there?
Do we want to do a timeframe on it, or?
Well, I, I kind of asked Andrea that when you guys were conversing, but I, you know, she said that, uh, she would, she would terminate this when, uh, that position is filled, so.
And Tammy probably isn't striving to pick this up forever, she's agreed to do it for.
Tempor, it's a temporary fix.
So starting July one, she, I bet she hopes that you would solve it in twenty twenty-three, we're not probably going into twenty twenty-four.
No, yeah.
Extending this.
No, I would definitely hope to have somebody in six months.
So.
If I don't, we're in big trouble, that's about what I can say.
I think it's a fair enough ask. What's your pleasure?
I would move to allow the prosecutor to contract with Tammy Shaw for fifty hours per month for a flat rate of four thousand per month, starting July first, twenty twenty-three, and to terminate when the position is filled.
Sport, so I moved in sport to allow the prosecutor to contract with Tammy Shaw for fifty hours per month for a flat rate of four thousand dollars per month, starting July one, twenty twenty-three, terminating when the position is filled, discussion.
Yes.
Yeah, the description talks about forty-two fifty, did we throw that out someplace?
Changed it.
I did, I, I thought it was eighty-five an hour that they were getting, and I, I had got bad information, it's only eighty dollars an hour.
So the amended description shows four thousand?
Yes, that should be the, in the, in the mo, that's what he said in the motion, four thousand.
Well, I know what he said.
Oh, yes, yes.
I'm reading this.
Sorry.
No problem, I don't hear everything, so, thanks.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrea, thanks for your input on the blight as well.
No.
No problem.
That ends our timed agenda items, committee reports is next, we don't have anything, new business, item one, clerk correspondence. Item two, controller correspondence.
Um, I did reach out to the cell tower company on that agreement, and she sent a template from some other municipality that I'll forward on to you for you to look at, um, the, a number of years, she just wanted to do twenty-five, she thought maybe she could do twenty, and then, and then she was willing to add a two percent increase monthly.
Monthly?
Very annually, not monthly, annually, which would go up the more tenants we got on the tower, so I'll send out, forward that all that information to you, I just want to let you know, I did get something back.
Did the amount of money go up at all, or?
The signing, no, that was still fifteen thousand, uh, that all stayed the same, so, but I'll forward that on to you, um, it was a rather long agreement, um, also, uh, FOP has reached out to start collective bargaining for their contract, and they want to set up dates in August and September to do that, are the three, so it's Ron, Adam and Pat are now the three, and Phil and Chris are alternates, do you want to do that now, set some dates, or do you want to wait?
August, September is what they're proposing.
Yeah.
The contract's up at year end.
Yeah.
I'm going to be pretty busy the last couple of weeks in August.
Yeah, that's a great timing for me, but if we do the.
Oh, no, you got.
September and October.
He's got, he's got sweet corn, yeah, late September, early October would be best for me, but I can, I can do something, I, I can make anything work, maybe.
November, early December. Yeah, we. I don't care, schedule it where everybody else, and I'll try to get there.
I'm going to shoot for October then?
September, October, yeah.
October, okay, let's see.
I think that'll give us a little bit more wiggle room.
Dates got available then, and we'll work from there, that's all I've got, other than the board meeting.
Number three, chair correspondence, the controller shared with me before the meeting that we'd talked last month about a board picture that we typically have done in the first year of the term, um, so we're trying to schedule that, um, right now, if, shoot for the, everybody that's in attendance tonight, are you going to be here the second meeting this month, as far as you know?
Twenty-six.
Could we schedule that picture for that day with everyone that's here, and we'll have Brenda make sure that Phil and Charlie schedule meets too, but we'll put that on the books for next meeting to accomplish that, we'll come.
As long as we don't use the same photographer as we did last time, it was terrible, terribly just, in, just not polite, took a bad picture of me, for sure. Yeah, I know, ridiculous.
Did you do it? Did you take that?
No.
I knew there was somebody in here who's getting that, but I didn't follow.
No, it me, I was just letting it go.
I was following along.
Just getting away with not being here, I think she did a great job.
So, you want to show up like it, do it at five thirty, right, half hour before the board meeting?
Yes.
Elizabeth, could you do it for us again?
I was considering it.
Oh, you were?
All right, I'll reach out to the two others, though, and we'll try to get that done.
Okay, that's all I have, so that ends new business, old business, we have one item, the clerk renovation options, so, I don't know, Doug or Brenda, who's presenting, or where are we at with that?
I can, I can run a little bit of point on this, I, uh, I did meet with Doug, uh, not last Friday, but the Friday before, and then, uh, met with the clerk afterwards, um, Doug, and I, I would like to say, and I came up with some, uh, ideas, it was mostly Doug, um, I presented those to the clerk, uh, she was very receptive, um, ultimately, that would be, um, my, I, I think the, the option that Doug and I kind of talked about while I was standing out there is option one, um, if you want to look, it's, uh, page one thirty-six, if you see, I don't know who, I'm, I'm sure everybody's familiar by now, since this, uh, conversation took place, if you see the, the red drawing there is, uh, at the bottom is the counter, the way it sits, we talked about turning it ninety degrees, uh, and aligning it with a door, and then just closing that off, making a door right there, and then a little viewing area for public viewing, um, it could work, it would, it would save us from having to move a wall, we'd still have to create a wall, um, the clerk and Doug got together and, uh, made option two, I think option two is just as, as doable, um, you know, we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to move one wall, which isn't the end of the world, we'd have to create a new wall anyways if we did it, uh, like option one, so either way, we're going to be creating a new wall, um, and, uh, the mailroom has, uh, has come into play in both drawings, um, to create new office space, being out there, it, it just kind of makes sense, it's already attached to that office, um, and, and I think in the spirit of, of give and take, this is a pretty easy, uh, pretty easy give and take, and then up in the, uh, law library, if you look at the top of page one thirty-seven, there's a, a picture of a conference room table there, that's the law library, um, we're going to put, or the, uh, the clerk would like to see, um, a door in the, uh, it'd be the top right corner of clerk two forty-six room, it would, it would le, lead into that law library, there's a couple of, uh, I think there's, is there three or four rolling?
Three or five.
Okay, four or five, uh, right there in that blank spot, there's four or five, um, rolling filing cabinets, the clerk would like to keep, uh, either two or three, whatever, take two of them out, so whatever that math ends up as, and leave those in there, um, obviously take the conference room out, her desk would go on the right side, um, and then she would, it would fill in everything accordingly, the, there is a door back down to the mailroom, there's a door that ha, that leads out, that has a swipe on there, um, I know it was talked about taking the swipe out and relocating that somewhere, I can't remember where we talked about.
Onto the new full-size door at the counter.
Yep, okay, and then, um, as, a, a, another, um, thing with the clerk, she was worried about meeting space for her canvassing board, um, there is a jury room that's used for probate court, I've gotten the impression that the jury room is not used often, if at all, um, and it, there's going to be significant changes as far as security there, there's going to be a, a swiped door right next to that, uh, jury room, so the board of canvassers and the public can come right in the side door, uh, and three steps, they're in the, they're in the meeting room for the board of canvassers, so there's, there's little to no, uh, chance of them being able to wander around our illustrious building. I, uh, after seeing this, again, you know, give and take, uh, I think we're putting, we're putting our clerk out there, she has, has conceded that, and I, I, I know that the mailroom was a little bit of, uh, contention, but at the same time, if it's one wall, um, I know Brenda's talked to district court or, or someone over there that said that they can give up one of their client meeting rooms to create a new mailroom, and, uh, the only thing the clerk would, would ask for as far as furnishings at this point is a new desk for, uh, that new office that used to be the mailroom, that is the plan as I understand it currently, does anybody have any questions about that? Doug, do you have anything to add? Brenda, do you have anything to add? I, I, again, I think, I think this is going to be the best, um, along with the counter, um, the sheriff has said that in, uh, security, uh, I guess in the, in the, in the best interest of security, we would want to go with a glass all the way up to the ceiling, and then a full door, uh, next to that, that counter, just in the, in the spirit of, of full security, um, other than that, uh, I don't think there's, did I, did I miss anything, Chris?
I don't believe so.
Um, Brenda, I don't know if you guys saw that, Brenda sent out a, a milestones roadmap, and I think, uh, this, this space is going to be, is the biggest milestone right now that we want to accomplish, and then, um, our, our clerk wants to be in a, as soon as possible, um, so. And then, um, our, our clerk wants to be in a, as soon as possible. Um, so I, I don't see anything wrong with this. Does anybody else have any, any real axes to grind on, on any of this? Do we need a motion to accept? Doug?
There is one point there on that timeline that I, that I canvassed some of the local contractors. Nobody can get work done vice versa.
I thought you said one. Good.
I have one. I mean, three bids. The other, I'm all vetted, but if it has to be done, so.
Well, I think through COVID, we've learned that it's just not always going to be a three-bid process. I mean, it's, we.
I have one contractor says he has a void in that location of August that he can do the work. Two other ones that responded back said November if there is.
Mm-hmm.
The other two didn't respond.
And that's to create a new wall and put in a new door?
Which can't be over fifteen thousand.
Wow.
Could it cost fifteen thousand?
They also have to replace the counter. We have to replace the glass on top of the counter. We have to make some adjustments. Now that it has to be full height, not because of the whole cat public, there's a lot of minor logistics that went into this whole plant, along with electrical and communications wiring.
Well, that would be separate from the construction.
I guess, I guess, could you go to the contractors and just have them bid it without a timeline on it? So we can at least see if the guy that, that can fit it in is somewhere in the ballpark. You know, I don't want him to say, well, I'm doing it within your timeframe. We're going to charge you five, five times more. Is that, is that doable? Is anybody opposed to that? Do we need a motion to accept option two as the clerk's new layout?
Yes, and I don't know if we'd want to incorporate that into the timeline, that milestone timeline that we've got as well, so we get all that in place.
Incorporate it as far as?
Uh, adopt that milestone timeline and this option two drawing as the, as the official blueprint or whatever that we're using for that milestone timeline. Does that make sense? Because we really need to adopt the milestone timeline as well, don't we?
I don't know.
I, I, I don't.
I never got any feedback from Chris, so I don't know. I needed to add something to it, or?
It's going to be hard, you know, especially if we say we're going to adopt this timeline and we get back that we can't, we can't get everything done when we want.
I don't think it's carved in stone as much as it's what our goal is, so everybody knows what we're trying to accomplish on a monthly basis.
Mm-hmm.
But I could go either way if you're not comfortable adding that, and you want to just adopt option two and we'll go forward.
Well, I guess so. In July, it says RFP for renovations, go out for bid on July third.
Uh, thinking that's going to happen sooner at this point.
Well, that's what I, that's, I guess that's what I'm saying is.
Well, let's just adopt option two as the schematic and we'll, we've seen the milestone timeline. We all understand there's some changes that'll have to be massaged there for people's schedules, but that's at least kind of a blueprint on what we're shooting for, and we'll, we won't make that official, but we'll just reference it. That sound good, fair?
Then I would, uh, I would move to adopt option two and instruct the maintenance director to go out for bids to accomplish that.
Support. And moved in supported to adopt the option two drawing that's before us and allow the maintenance director to go out for bids on the construction that's involved with this discussion. Yeah.
Yes, is, um, option two reflects the ideas that the clerk and the maintenance director are happiest with. Is that correct?
My understanding.
Very good.
And Adam, Adam's happy.
Oh, I couldn't, uh, it doesn't matter to me.
Well, I wasn't.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm happy if, if Chris, if Chris can concede that this is her, her favorite, which she said it is. Doug's okay with it. Brenda, everybody's good. Hey, I'm happy as a clam.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. That ends old business. Public comments.
Gosh, there was more people. I thought that we were really going to be on to something. Somebody was going to have something to say.
We either did it really good or really bad.
Yeah. I'll, I'll fall back on the ladder. Yeah. I'll, uh, I'll move to adjourn.
Or, then moved in supported to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.